Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sylvia Rocco?
Mayor Clark is absent tonight. Council President Robinson?
Here.
Councilor Henderson?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Councilor Kuiper?
Here.
Councilor Harris is here, and Councilor Cook is absent.
All right, well, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second it.
All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Then the motion carries. Next on the agenda is our public hearing for ordinance pertaining to medical marijuana dispensaries, and specifically, ordinance number 2015-005 amending multiple sections of the zoning and community development code, including divisions one, two, and three, as it relates to the regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency. Before I have our city recorder read our public hearing announcements, I urge you to go in the back and fill out a form if you'd like to speak at the public hearing tonight. I have two forms so far. I can't refer to them as green. They're not green anymore. But they are back on the table, and we'd love to hear from all who wish to be heard. Sylvia?
The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing tonight to hear testimony on ordinance 2015-005 amending multiple sections of the zoning and community development code, including divisions one, two, and three, as it relates to the regulations of medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency. The purpose of the hearing is to allow the public an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said item. The order of business the council will follow in conducting this hearing is to hear the staff report, receive any correspondence, receive public testimony, and additional staff comments. Questions from the council will follow. The hearing will then be closed, and no further testimony will be received this evening. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and provide it to the city recorder. The council president will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the council president. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded, and please limit your testimony to four minutes.
And may we have the staff report?
There you go.
Thank you. I'm waiting for... Well, thank you. Tonight's hearing is, should the city council hold a public hearing to approve the planning commission recommendation to amend sections of the Sherwood zoning and development code in order to regulate medical marijuana dispensaries within the city?
That might coming up on the screen.
Sure. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
We have it on our screen, but the audience can't see it up at the top.
So, a couple of beginning clarifying points. The passage of Measure 91, which legalized recreational marijuana, was approved by the voters last November, as you're aware. As an aside, the city of Sherwood voters did not approve legalizing recreational marijuana. The OLCC will be creating regulations, and they may make changes to that law over time with the existing legislature. So, we want to make sure that any additional regulations that the city might want to impose or put in place, that they're compatible with that. So, this hearing tonight is just addressing medical marijuana and medical marijuana dispensaries. And a second clarifying point, at a joint work session earlier with the planning commission and the city council back in February, indicated that we really didn't want to consider an outright ban on medical marijuana dispensaries due to that issue not really being litigated in court at this time, and the council did not want to use resources to defend any type of litigation that might occur out from an outright ban. So, to go over a little bit of the history of medical marijuana in Oregon, back in 1998, voters approved the Oregon Medical Marijuana Act, and that provided an opportunity for medical marijuana patients to obtain medical marijuana from growers. And that system worked with, as registered cardholders, and that system worked for a number of years, but there was an excess amount of marijuana being created from the grow operations. So, it created this gray area, and so, facing that conundrum, the legislature passed in 2013, required dispensaries to register with the Oregon Health Authority, and that's where that system began. In 2014, Senate Bill 1531 authorized local jurisdictions to regulate dispensaries by imposing time, place, and manner restrictions on their operations, and it also allowed a moratorium on dispensaries through May 1st of 2015. And so, the council in Sherwood enacted a moratorium last spring that expires in the next few days, taking us to where we are today. So, the statewide medical marijuana dispensary land use regulations include that a dispensary must be located in a commercial, industrial, mixed-use, or agricultural zone. They can't be located in the same location as a grow site or operation. They need, they can't be within 1,000 feet from a school, public, private, or any other dispensaries. Background checks are done on the operators of the dispensary. They need to be a registered business in the state of Oregon, and they must install a security system, and they can't be mobile. And some of those rules are identified in the packet of information that you have before you. So, here's what, how that translates to the city of Sherwood, should the city decide not to offer any more regulations than what the state allows. You can see that the schools are highlighted in blue with the 1,000-foot buffers, and the color-coded tax slots are identified where a dispensary could potentially be located if the city were just imposing the state regulations. So, the purple is the industrial zones, and the oranges and the reds are the commercial zones. So, taking a look at that information, starting in early February, a public outreach was done to develop our own local time, place, and manner restrictions. The planning commission held a public work session on March 10th, and we had a good turnout, and the planning commission met in small groups with about 27 community members in small groups, and went over some of the requirements for state, of the state rules, and also to see if they wanted to require any additional regulations on time, place, and manner restrictions. A couple of things that came out of that were that the majority of people thought that it could be located in the commercial or industrial zone. They indicated that a buffer was important for parks as well, as well as placing some restrictions on the hours of operation, and a staff-level review would be appropriate. Additional outreach was done with an online survey that ran during the month of March, and that generated over 170 responses. The vast majority of those survey respondents indicated that a preference for industrial zone only for locating a dispensary. They approved of the buffering for parks and plaza, as well as the hours of operation should also have some limitations and security measures in place. Another great thing about this process was the, I met with the police advisory board, and they reviewed the proposed regulations on April 2nd, and they did a really thorough job of evaluating those, and they came up with some amendments that were presented to the planning commission at the first hearing on the 14th. Some of those were to restrict the size of the medical marijuana dispensary, to reduce that size to 2,500 square feet. They indicated a support of industrial zone only as well, as well as not allowing any delivery of medical marijuana to any patients, and creating a definition for public plazas. And pretty much, the planning commission at the hearing really gained a lot of information from all of the outreach, and that resulted in their recommendation that you have before you this evening. So, they included some changes to the definition, adding medical marijuana dispensary to the definition, mobile vendor, and public plaza. So, here we have the zoning and buffer restrictions for the planning commission recommendation of the industrial zone only. You can see in purple are the areas where a dispensary could be allowed, and it also includes the public parks and plaza buffer where a dispensary could not be located, and includes those as well. Also, a special use category was created for medical marijuana dispensaries, and that outlines some of the rules for regulating those, one being that the dispensary needs to comply with the Oregon Health Authority under the Medical Marijuana Act, and any violations of those rules are also a violation of our code. It included a type-two land use process, which includes notice to property owners within 1,000 feet, or other notice requirements, as well as a staff-level decision. It also created some criteria for medical marijuana dispensaries in the special use categories with hours of operation, the added buffers I showed in the prior slide, as well as some additional security measures. Going over the type-two land use process gives you an idea of the type of review that's required for that. So, summing that up, the changes at the hearing were limiting the land use zone to industrial land use only, reducing the allowable size of a dispensary to 3,000 square feet, allowing a dispensary to remain open from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. all days of the week, and adding that definition for the public plaza. It's always interesting to compare our proposal with some of the other jurisdictions' responses to the medical marijuana regulations. Here we have Washington County through Tigard, and kind of how they landed on some of these zoning decisions, as well as the buffers that were created with their regulations. You can see here the hours of operation that these jurisdictions chose, as well as the limitations for dispensaries and the size of their facilities. So, again, the recommendations are to add the definition to chapters 1610, add medical marijuana to the use category in the general and light industrial zone, add medical marijuana dispensary under a type-two process, add criteria for medical marijuana dispensaries in the special use category, hours of the public are limited to 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the parks and plaza buffer, along with the security measures. And at this time, I'll take any questions that you might have.
I'd like to ask council to ask any corresponding questions they might have from Michelle, and save their discussion points until after our public hearing. So, does anyone have any questions?
Quick question.
Sure.
So, Michelle, under, I guess it would be page two of the attachment A, so in our packet, it's page 12. It's in the under-commercial uses. It says, "Medical marijuana dispensary not exceeding 5,000 square feet." And you mentioned 3,000 square feet. So, is this where the land use, the planning commission bumped it up from 2,500 to five?
That's correct. The information that you have in front of you is the staff report, and then the first is the planning commission recommendation, and that includes some additional exhibits that you have in front of you, one being the first draft of the proposed code language that was subsequently amended and attached, I believe, as Exhibit A, which is found on page 66 of your packet. So, that is the
Oh, thank you.
official draft language for the code amendments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
I have a question. The exhibit, looks like attachment one to your staff report, is the final rules for medical marijuana dispensary program, and it's dated January 28th of this year. Are those the final, final rules, and have they been available to us since January? Or, I haven't seen those before, so I was curious.
So, those rules were first, I believe, the information was provided to the planning commission through that packet on April 14th as Exhibit?
Okay. And do?
Exhibit B. I'm not sure how, I don't know the process for the OARs. I think that they're continually updating, and that's the latest draft that I have.
Okay, but it says final, so I didn't know if it was a draft or a final. That was my question. You know? It says final rules, is it? But you've mentioned draft.
Those are the final rules. That title is what I think it is.
All right.
Let me add, the Oregon Health, I keep wanting to call it department, but the Health Authority obviously updated these rules. The old rules were a couple of years old, and obviously, the issue's been getting a lot of attention, so they updated these for the dispensaries only. They are currently going through the rulemaking for the recreational marijuana, and those rules are likely to look very different. The draft rules are available. We can certainly get the link and send them to you if you'd like to read draft administrative rules. But those have to be complete before the end of this year. So, it's, when you've got a hot issue like this, the state agencies are updating the rules pretty frequently, and it's a big effort. For other issues, the rule, you know, your fish licenses, for example, those rules have probably been on the books for years and never been updated. So, they update the administrative rules on as-needed basis, and there might be multiple drafts before you get to the final. These are the final for the medical marijuana, and as I say, the recreational are in process right now.
And are these the rules also for grow sites?
There are, yes. So, for medical marijuana grow sites, yes. If you look, it's on pages, I think, 29, 30 or so of the rules. The grow site registration, yes, on page 29, and it's OAR 33-008-0025.
Okay, I have a follow-up question. My question is, is there any movement in state level right now to go and co-locate, allow co-location of medical dispensaries as well as recreational?
I don't know. I haven't been following the legislature very closely.
I know, that's why I just wanted to throw it out there.
I don't know. I did go to CLE in February with AOC and LOC. Their general councils have both been very involved. And I think it's accurate to say, there's probably effort in the legislature to move these regulations in every possible direction.
Okay, thank you.
So, there kind of was a drop-dead date this week for moving legislation forward, and according to a law seminar that I went to a couple of weeks ago, they are not confident that that legislation for co-location will be moving forward. That's Senate Bill 936. There was some movement on that, but it didn't get, it didn't get the traction that it needed to get to that next level, is my understanding.
Procedural question for the city, when someone comes to put an application in, if you have a grow site, our typical type-two process says that we publish in five locations where, around where that site will be, but if the site is confidential, have we dealt with that issue yet, or?
And I've asked that question to our League of Oregon City's advisor. They, that's a, it's a
That's a problem.
gray area that they know exists, and they're trying to address that. That's an excellent point. They are not required to divulge their grow operations. They're not required to even divulge necessarily their dispensary operations. But if they are going to be public, most dispensaries want to be public, and that's how we'll know that address. They are required, I believe, I think the chief might know where those operations are. They are required to do that to the police.
Okay, and speaking of the chief, did we receive any other correspondence beside his letter on this issue?
No. You received, I think we marked that as Exhibit D.
Oh, there was a letter about the hours. Excuse me. Any other correspondence?
Exhibit D, Chief's Grove, and he participated in the police advisory board meeting and commented there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do you? Okay. Let me find my page, since we're going back and forth. So, one of the things that the police advisory board recommended was the definition of a plaza. And so, I'm looking at 53 and 54 of our packet. Public park, playground, swimming pool, reservoir, athletic field, or other recreational facility under the control operation. We're going to have a $5 million path called the Cedar Creek Trail. And I don't see paths or trails listed here. And I don't know if it's going to be a concern when I look at the city map and I look at the alignment of Cedar Creek Trail, but that is going to be a path of all ages, including youth. And there's going to be youths who are going to work on that trail and do surface projects on that trail, and I don't see any... Yeah, I don't have any, I don't see anything, not to mention a huge asset that we'll have. And wanted to just bring that to the council's attention, as well as staff. Like I said, I'm not sure it's going to be an issue, but it's something that...
Well, these are existing parks that we have now. So, when we add a park, which the trail may be included as open space or park, or we haven't categorized how we're going to be labeling that, or it'll be owned by the public, could be, could add to the definition, or other recreational facility. Or we could, when we adopt the alignment for the trail, say that this is part of our park system, even though it's a lateral, over-lateral park. Also, we have prohibitions against smoking in the public facilities. So, would likely add a buffer. I don't see that, that, an area that might be in jeopardy and potentially in the industrial zone that would be impacted by the park with the 1,000-foot buffer as well.
So, I was talking to Michelle earlier about grow houses and how they're currently regulated under code, and we haven't really came across that issue. I assume if you set up a grow house, you have to have a business license. Yes? No? So, it's not listed as a business? What's it listed as?
If they're conducting business in the city, they should get a business license. And if they're doing it in a residential zone, they would need a home occupation permit.
So, the way, to use your term, a grow house would operate, they would register with the state as a caregiver, which would allow them to provide marijuana to a registered cardholder. And that grow site would then need to be registered as a provider for caregiver or as a part of a caregiver. And that's it.
That's only with the state, though.
What's that?
That's only with the state.
Right, right.
I'm sorry.
So...
No, I stand corrected. He's absolutely right. Under the current regulations for medical marijuana, a grow operation is not a commercial activity. You're just growing for that cardholder, or up to, I think, three, four cardholders.
And that's really from, like, one of the points that I made in my position, which, by the way, is completely independent of the police advisory board. That's important to note. That's just my position as your police chief. It may be very similar with other positions, but that's just me. Is that, the way the medical marijuana program is set up, entire program, is it's not defined as a classic retail business, commercial operation. So, folks have the ability to get reimbursed for their cost of providing the marijuana as medicine, but that's it. So, somebody that's growing simply needs to register with the state, and they're not, according to anything that I can see in statute, they're not defined as a business that would require a business license. And we don't have them, clearly, we don't have them defined uniquely in our code. And I don't know that we could make that connection based on the definition that exists today in state statute slash OAR, so...
It's also important to remember that we're very much shooting at a moving target, because this is just the medical marijuana dispensaries, not grow operations, but the regulations tonight, just the dispensaries, under the existing medical marijuana statutes and administrative rules. But a year from now, it will be Measure 91 and the recreational. And at that point, you know, you're not just talking about somebody growing a few plants for a couple of cardholders. At that point, things do become much more commercial than they are now. And we'll have this discussion again.
Right, and that's in line with my question, which is, when we started, when I started reviewing the packet, I'm thinking, I noticed Mr. Kreen pointed out marijuana grow site registration. I was thinking, how do we regulate grow sites in Sherwood right now? Because we've never really talked about it. And just a clarification, you can have a grow site and a dispensary in the same building, as long as they're not the same address, correct?
Yeah, what constitutes co-location?
That was my question for, can somebody, between now and maybe our next reading? That's my concern with what will be the beginning of regulating marijuana in our community and eventually the entire state, when recreation comes into play. I'd like to be thinking long-term when we write an ordinance, rather than short-term and having to go back and amend it later, because we didn't anticipate something happening when this becomes a basically commercially-available product. So, regulated by two different agencies.
That's correct.
Right? OHA, OLCC. So, and there was an article in there, growing in yesterday, that OLCC's requested $10 million to fund 23 positions to regulate this program based on estimated revenue. I don't know. So, but, and I had one more question for staff. I might have to come back to it. Go ahead.
So, just to clarify, medical marijuana has been legal for 17 years. Is that correct?
Since 1998, yes.
And then, so the major change was that they are allowing local jurisdictions to regulate? Is that the change?
It was fairly unregulated. It was more, they're, they registered cardholders, and then there were growers for those cardholders, and they were allowed a certain number of plants. Over time, it was found that there is a lot of excess marijuana based on the amount of plants that, or the production of the plants. So, that excess was falling into the hands of these dispensaries, and they, there really wasn't, there really wasn't a place for them to operate legally. So, it was called a legal gray area. And finally, the, like, 2007, they tried to do something, but 2013 was when they really started to tackle the issue and created a dispenser, a registered dispensary program, and said, "Okay, go ahead and craft some rules now." And those rules were developed over a year's time.
So, there's been dispensaries?
Right.
For however long there's been dispensaries?
I just got that answer by the eye. I'm going to tell them.
And now, they just decided we should regulate them, but they hadn't been in the past?
Correct.
Or does, it sounds like...
I'm sorry, the impetus was really the dispensary issue. That's what OMMP's been operating, right, but the impetus for where we're at today was the state saying, "We need to deal with this dispensary issue." So, that's really the change.
These dispensaries are operating, and we should probably have some rules and laws around them.
Yes.
Just playing catch-up.
So, 17 years later, that's where we are.
Yes.
And so, 17 years ago, if you had a medical marijuana card, you would go to a dispensary, not directly to the grower, right?
There weren't... There weren't any dispensaries. The idea was that you would have a grower grow your marijuana if you weren't going to grow it yourself.
Okay.
And they were allowed to have four patients.
Yeah, and their patients were producing more than, a lot, yeah.
It really changed the landscape for all sides of the issue. This notion that folks can now run a location that provides the marijuana. And so the state said, okay, we've got to wrestle with this. And I have clarification too, Council Henderson. Under OMMP, a grow site can be next to a dispensary. They just cannot be in the same addressed facility. But they can be...
So they could be next door, but not necessarily like suite 105, suite 106?
Well, no, they can be. If they're completely independent places, yes. So I mean, under that example, technically, they could have almost the same address minus the suite, but they can't be inside the same...
Can't be inside the same four walls.
Same four walls.
To be specific to the regulation we're proposing in the industrial zone, you're not going to get office buildings with suite ABC, but you could get, in an office park, you know, at 1041 Office Park Drive A, 1041 B, 1041 C, each one a, you know, 10,000 square foot facility. And those are each a different address.
Right. But you would only have one grow site and one dispensary. Because they would then eliminate the potential for others, but they could be next door to one in proximity.
But if you, but located in the commercial zone, it, under our current code, a grow site wouldn't be allowed in the commercial zone.
Okay. That's providing dispensaries in a commercial site.
Exactly. That would be an option if you wanted to separate them.
In other words, they could be, they could be next door to each other in industrial, but not in commercial.
Right.
Any other questions for staff?
Chief's kind of shaking his head over here.
So would a grow operation be considered industrial?
Yes.
Or farming?
Well, it would be considered a nursery or a landscape materials or nursery stock, primarily, we have that category, which we don't have in the commercial zone to allow that.
Right. But again, it's important to understand that we're, in my simplistic view, we're not talking about grow sites.
Right.
Because we, they're not regulated and there's currently no, no mechanism to regulate them. I can tell you that we have some in the city already and they're just, I mean, somebody can have a registered grow site in their, in their home.
Right.
And we've had calls, hey, I just happened to peek over my fence and my neighbor's got this massive pile of marijuana growing. And so then we call and they will simply confirm, they'll just say, give us the address, yes, that's a registered grow site, end of story. That's it, it's over. So, so we're really not, I mean, they could be, they could be wherever you, wherever they are, or wherever they could find that, that place. So unless there's some, some other language in the code about, you know, how they would have to, you know, operate a commer, that I don't know. But, but in terms of regula, there is no regulation for the grow site. So that can become a confusing topic from my perspective.
Council President, can I follow up on that for a moment with Michelle? At what point, do you require land use approval for change of use, for example, in a commercial zone? And if so, how is that triggered? By tenant improvements?
If it's in the commercial zone and they are continuing a commercial, commercially permitted zone, then that does not trigger anything. Like if a restaurant went in in a commercial zone and then they decided to open up a dress shop, that wouldn't trigger any...
That would not trigger anything.
Land use.
Okay, even though there's, you know...
They weren't changing any exterior.
Okay.
Might evaluate the parking from the engineering perspective or, it's very minimal.
Okay, so you could change...
They would have building permit approval potentially for tenant improvements.
But no land use approval? It would never come, it would never show up on the zoning radar? Okay.
Okay. Any others?
I had found my one, or remembered my one more question. So our, we're proposing, staff is proposing, that at any violation of the ORS, which is Attachment B, beginning on page 18, the final rule is for the medical marijuana dispensary program that Council Robinson wanted to know if they were final or not, on page 37, is packaging. So having never visited a dispensary, I wouldn't know what containers designed and constructed to be significantly difficult for children under five years of age to open. And not difficult for adults to use properly. I don't know how that is regulated or monitored, but I would, I mean, access marijuana getting into the hands of young adults, I'm not really worried about five-year-old children, but I guess it's possible if they put it in the ORS, into young adults. What we've seen coming out of Colorado, recreationally, are things packaged that look just like a candy bar, ice cream bar, or something. And I don't know what dispensaries have, but...
And different quality, too.
Yeah, I just, I was just, if somebody could impart some information about how those things are packaged, I mean, it's in the ORS for a reason. And medicinal probably doesn't fall into that category, but I was just curious if anybody had any idea about what they sell that's edible, that we can maybe quote in our ordinance to make sure that that continues to be followed or has some teeth. And that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle and Chris and Chief Jing.
Council Kean, do you have any questions, staff?
I have one more for the chief. Sorry. What are your, have you heard or have any data on some of the major issues these medical marijuana dispensaries are having?
Yes.
Major police action, that kind of thing? Like what is the big problem and how big is the problem for, not recreational, but...
Right, right. So the two things that have historically gotten a dispensary in trouble are the two most obvious. One, they're dispensing or providing to those that don't have medical marijuana cards. Or two, they're charging more than what they should be charging and they are acting as a for-profit business. And oftentimes, those, those two are occurring at the same time, right? I mean, if, if a cardholder comes in and you say, hey, look, here's the cost for this, they reimburse. If a non-cardholder comes in, it really then is no longer providing the medicine as much as it is, you know, just, just delivery of the, of the marijuana. I will say that while those are the two issues, for the most part, the medical marijuana program has flown under the radar. So it's my opinion that the vast majority of folks that are engaged in the medical marijuana program really don't want the attention. And I, and I mentioned that, they're not out to flaunt the fact that they have chosen to use marijuana or are needing to use marijuana, whether the case may be. So it's not, there hasn't been any real significant crime issues related to, we talked about this with the police advisory board, related to the medical marijuana program. It's just not been a, you know, a big issue or concern, except for those, those two issues. That's, when dispensaries have gotten into problems, that's, that's what's gotten them into trouble.
So, and we, just my perspective, which maybe I'm not as first in all the information, the two major issues aren't really, we're not really meeting any of those needs in any of these ordinances. I mean, we're not addressing those needs or those issues.
Well, yeah, I think, I think we are. I think that the last topic that was brought up about incorporating, whoop, incorporating the ORS into our municipal code, that's a critical component because...
Okay.
One of the complaints that the medical marijuana program in Oregon has sustained is that it is unregulated. Now technically, it is regulated by the Oregon Health Authority, but they, they have a ridiculously low number of people that are tasked with that. And I, I may be wrong, but it's like three or six for the entire state. So there's just no way that, that they can do that. So the point I made in my position is that it's my belief as your chief that the community, and I've, I've heard this to some degree, is going to look to their police department to manage and supervise this and make sure that they're operating the way they should. And, and without writing a whole new set of code language, the simplest way to do that is to incorporate that language into our code, so, and give us the ability to then enforce that and make sure that folks are in a medical dispensary only providing to who they should be and following the regulations that are in place.
And do you feel like location and hours of operation meet any of those issues? Or that's just to help people feel better?
Well, I think hours is probably the, the least issue. I think the hours need to be set so that they're reasonable. Again, as I, as I stated, I think we have to look at this as medicine and it has to be made available. I mean, that, and so I think those hours do that while at the same time keeping them to, you know, a number of hours that the community is going to be comfortable with. So that's the, that's the lesser of those issues. The bigger issue for me is location. And I, I think it's important that, that we make that decision very carefully and with a lot of thought, which I think has gone into this process. Ultimately, that's what y'all are going to do, but certainly, you know, I have my position that you have in front of you about where they should be located and the reasons for that. I won't go into that unless you want me to, but I, I think location is, is an important component of this.
Thank you.
May I ask the chief one more question? So when I went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference last fall, I went to, there were lots of seminars on marijuana for obvious reasons. And one of them was dispensaries, and a gentleman who serves on the Crestwell City Council also works in a dispensary. And one of the things that he pointed out, that he thought was lax in regulation, is you can buy up to 24 ounces a day from a dispensary. You literally go in, buy an ounce, go back out. Go in, buy an ounce, go back out. So obviously, they have to keep records. So my question for the chief is, how, how does that, obviously, that person is buying it and then selling it to non-medicinal users would be my guess, or, or running a little side business. And how is that communicated back either to OHA or to you as a local law enforcement that, you know, that's, that would obviously, just like somebody who's going to different pharmacies and, you know, getting a prescription for oxy or codeine or something, I'm just wondering how that information gets back to the person who provides the license, which has a staff of three or four people? And then if that situation were to persist, how would we, in our community, resolve that? Obviously, that would be a violation of their ORS. Well, technically, it's not because they're able to sell up to 24 ounces a day, which is a lot of medical marijuana. So if you don't, and if you don't, you don't have to answer that now, I'm just trying to think of all the scenarios that...
I can answer it. It wouldn't be reported to us.
Why not?
Because it, it wouldn't. I mean, if, if they're doing what they believe they can do, certainly the dispensary is not going to report that. I mean, if they're operating within the regulations, and, and I'll draw the comparison you did. If, if a pharmacy has somebody that comes in to fill a prescription for OxyContin and the pharmacist knows this person shouldn't have this, unless they...
Or they were just here two days ago.
Right. That, that's, that's not a legal matter, that's a health matter. So they, they wouldn't report that to us unless they thought the prescription was fraudulent.
Right.
So then they would call us and say, hey, we think we've got a bad script. So, you know, to be fair, it wouldn't happen there either, but it certainly is not going to happen in the, in the dispensary scenario because there's nothing that would require that. Now, the regulation, the regulation and inspection would potentially reveal a problem if the records were not being kept like they were, or the records showed that there was some, some violations occurring. But there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be, and I certainly wouldn't expect any self-reporting about, hey, we got somebody that's just coming in and buying, you know, getting a lot of weed. I just, I mean, I just wouldn't.
Well, and that kind of falls under my question was, is that an issue that is one of the major issues? The one she's speaking of? Are you, have you heard?
I, that specifically, I can't.
Or the reselling of it, I guess.
Yeah, well, so that's it.
But they don't report it, so how would we know?
Well, I mean, the reselling of it.
Right. So I can't, I can't say whether, whether the going in to get more is an issue. And I think that, you know, taking that specifically, and then the second component specifically about, I'm going to get all I can and go and resell it, that, that's really, would be, from my perspective, pure speculation. I mean, I, I could, I could assume or speculate that somebody that's maxing out on a, on a daily basis, the amount they're allowed to, they're, they're probably not using that themselves, so they could be stockpiling it, they could be, I mean, they could be...
You're not going to catch them until they're actually doing that.
Right. I mean, they, they potentially, I would think, could potentially be a caregiver. And so they're getting, they're getting, because you have to understand, you, you can be, you can be a grower or a caregiver for multiple patients. So, so they could potentially, they, you know, they may have patients that are homebound or not comfortable going out and going to a dispensary.
Yeah, but every time they come in, they would have a different card that they would buy under, correct?
Not necessarily. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on that.
I only brought it up because the counselor from Crestwell...
Right.
Obviously, is in a very unique position. He brought it up as he thought it was a huge oversight that they could buy up to 24 ounces a day. And nobody's really keeping track.
The legislature is recognizing that all this excess marijuana that's out there is really going to undermine any recre, money that taxation can bring with recreational marijuana. So they are really working on curbing that amount. And that's part of the legislation process that's going on right now is, is to really curb all of this excess marijuana that's going out into the system, that has been going out into the system for the past 17 years. So...
I can tell you that, specific to the dispensary, the bigger concern is the grow sites. The grow sites that are, that are supporting dispensaries, but they're growing far more marijuana than, than the dispensary needs. And, and they're obviously distributing it somewhere. So there, there have been bigger issues that I can think of off the top of my head with, with the grow sites than there have been with dispensaries besides the ones that I already talked about. So obviously, that gentleman has some inside knowledge, but, you know, I, I have to come at this and I want to come at this, you know, from a fair perspective. And so I don't, I don't want to speculate what somebody's doing and, and, so that's a, that's a tough one to answer. They could conceivably, I think, and if somebody, I don't know if Chris has the regs in front of him or, Captain Hamlin might know, I can text him and we'll come back to it if you want me to. They could conceivably have a medical marijuana card of their own and be a caregiver? I'd have to check. And/or, as a caregiver, they're allowed to, to go to a dispensary without their own use card. So I, so I think there's some potential that somebody could be going there and, and not doing anything wrong. They, they just are trying to take care of a lot of folks. I, I don't know. That's just, that would seem just as likely as it would that somebody's clearly breaking the law and they're, you know, they're doing the other, so...
But you said previously that we have caregiver growers in Sherwood, but we don't know where they're at?
We may not, we may not know where they're all at, no.
Yeah.
Because they don't have to report, they don't have to register with us. It's not, yeah, there's no, it's a, it's a system, and that's, that's been another knock. I mean, it's, it's been a knock, yet it's also been a, a, a point that's very important to medical users. And that is, there needs to be some confidentiality about it. And so trying to find that balance has been a challenge for the state, but there is clear confidentiality. So, so law enforcement doesn't have the ability to call to seek information. We can, we can call and confirm something we have and they will ask us for a name or an address. And they will confirm that somebody has a, is a cardholder or that that location address is a registered grow site. But that's it. If I, if we called and said, hey, look, how many grow sites do we have in Sherwood? They'd say, thanks for calling, we're not going to tell you that.
Well, and then you also think in a couple of months, people can grow privately and how...
Right.
How will you be able to discern the difference between a grow site and a personal use site?
Well, they can now.
I was going to say...
I mean, if somebody, if somebody's good at gardening and they have a cardholder, they, they can self-support. They, they, I mean, that's, that's part of the program. They don't, may not ever need to go to a dispensary or have a caregiver if they know how to grow. how to grow. Some of us can't grow a house plant, so they need people or they're physically unable, so they, they need caregivers.
Or they live in a situation where they can't grow, you know, apartment or care facility, yeah, I mean.
But you, it sounds like, based on the grow sites that you know of, we're not having huge police presence there every weekend because they're throwing pot parties?
No.
Okay.
No, that would be a-
It's not a huge issue that you see with the growers?
Again, the growers get into trouble because they're, they are, if they are a registered grow site, so if they're not a registered grow site, then they're just an illegal grow site. That's a, that's a whole different thing.
That's different.
But if they're a registered grow site and they're supporting three dispensaries at the level based on their records, which they're required to keep, of 10 pounds a week, just for easy math, and they're producing 50 pounds a week, they're, what's happening to the other 20 pounds?
Right.
And that's where they've gotten into trouble. It's going into the black market.
So just to clarify then, oh, I'm sorry, Council Harris, the grow operations are not regulated as to how much they can grow, correct?
Yes, they are.
They are.
They are regulated with the number of plants and the number of people, but it can be exponential. So if you all were growers, you could have four other growers under your purview that you're growing for and those could have four and you can see how it-
Okay, okay.
How it becomes a pyramid.
This is what LSC and AOC refer to as card stacking at grow sites.
It's exponential.
And you would get in trouble by growing more than what you were registered-
To do.
-to do.
And so there's no, there is no regulation that addresses that card stacking, really?
Not right now. That's one of their major priorities.
Okay.
Right, especially for the OLCC because they don't want to have all this unregulated marijuana out there-
Right.
-as they try to regulate-
Okay.
The other thing that's challenging is they don't regulate the size or height of the plant, it's just a plant.
Yeah.
So it could be-
Some of the plants look like trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or the, or the potency.
Interesting.
You know, when you go to a pharmacy, you get what is on the bottle and what your physician has prescribed, but with, and this is all things that were talked about at the league conferences, that the size of the plant, the potency of the marijuana, whatever they're using or growing, none of that is really regulated. It's regulated for pesticides, but yeah, a lot of gray area.
Well, but there, from my research, have been zero incidents of overdose from pot, ever, pot overdose.
I think, so I would have to, I can't think of any research that would disagree with that. I will say that-
They didn't sleep for days or whatever, but no actual death from overdose.
I will tell you that the industry will refer to overdosing on marijuana when they talk about, primarily when you're having, talking about edibles and how those are produced and how kind of that whole part of it, that the industry, cannabis industry will talk about, you're going to get into trouble if you do this, but, but I would agree with you that there's no, you know, very clear documented cases of, oh my goodness, this person got rushed because of marijuana overdose. It's just not something you hear about, but, so I, I guess I'm 80% agree, 20% disagree because I'm learning from the industry that that is a concern of theirs and they're addressing it within the industry.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to let Michelle sit down and-
Thank you, Michelle.
We're going to open the public hearing now for people to come, provide their comments. I have two forms. Again, if you'd like to speak, please pass your, good, there's some more forms so that we could listen to you. The first one I have is Anthony Bevel.
Thank you and good evening. Anthony Bevel, 17036 Southwest Lindley Way, Sherwood, resident for 17 years. We've almost focused the whole hour on how this dispens, medical marijuana dispensaries is going to be abused. Well, all the good of mankind can be abused, so I think we have to focus, or focus more on the good that medical marijuana is going to do. A personal anecdote, and not poor me, but my mother died of cancer, 1980, and she smoked marijuana, so, and this was in Nevada, so technically, you know, she was a criminal at that time. The criminal part of it was, excuse me again, that my younger sister went and bought it for her, which is kind of funny, but anyway, so, and that's just an anecdote. It was good for her. And I've used this word before, there's an undercurrent that I get the whole meaning that, you know, there's no belief that medical marijuana is a viable medication for people who are suffering. These people who use it, and I know other, another person who uses it currently, you know, they're suffering and this relieves their pain. They don't choose to use what I call the hard drugs, they use medical marijuana. So they haven't gone out, run over anyone, hit and run and kill two people or people, just look in the paper recently, two people from alcohol, so, you know, make that distinction. In a way, you're banning medical marijuana dispensaries by regulating them so heavily. You're putting them, when you look at that map, it's pretty confined, which, you know, no problem there, keeping it away from schools, keeping it away from parks, that's fine. The selling of it, which leads me to the question, if I had a card and I needed it to medicate my pain, would I be able to ingest or smoke in a park or in a, within a thousand foot of a school? So that's a question I have. You're banning it by limiting location and limiting the time. You don't limit a doctor's office by any time and you don't limit the doctor's office by any location either. As far as what we're afraid of, our kids, you know, getting hold of this marijuana, well, I've said before, if they want it, they're going to find it. But the way I understand the law, if I wanted to go into medical marijuana dispensary, I couldn't go in there because I don't have a card. Will people who, you know, don't have a card get in? Possibly. People go buy alcohol, kids. So, you know, it's a hard, hard to make distinctions. So, yeah, and just one more thing, you know, how many, how many applications do we currently have for medical marijuana dispensaries? I don't think we have many. I mean, I'm sure that there are, you know, quite, I don't, I have no idea how many medical marijuana users there are in Sherwood, but I'd hazard to say there's not enough to support two dispensaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Nancy Taylor. And just a reminder, we have the timer working. Our chief is taking good care of that.
Nancy Taylor, Sherwood, Oregon, in the city. I've been thinking about this for quite a while. I don't drink, I don't smoke, I believe your body is your temple, I think anything you do to screw your temple up is bad, but that's hypocritical when it comes to people's pain. I don't have pain. I don't have to take, occasionally, I have a headache, especially after I come out of these meetings, and just a Tylenol or something will handle that. So I don't have a huge medical cabinet at home. I don't have OxyContin at home. I don't have these problems, so I don't have the sympathy for it. But as I was thinking about it, I went to a site called alcoholism.com and I just wanted to share a few things I found out. I want you to think about this as you're putting restrictions on people with medical needs. Drunk drivers kill someone every 39 minutes. A drunk driver injures someone every minute. One survey found that Americans took 159 million alcohol impaired driving trips in a single year. The highest percentage of drunk drivers involved in fatal crashes are in between the ages of 18 and 24, and it's not even legal to drink until you're 21, I think. I'm sure they've changed that. More than half of all drivers involved in fatal crashes have a blood alcohol concentration of .15 or more, and the legal limit, I think in Oregon, is .08. I just want to share these with you because we're not talking about this. We're not legislating this here in the city of Sherwood. I can go into Clancy's, which I won't later, and I can drink as much as I want and I can probably drive home and if I'm really lucky, chief's not going to catch me. And if I, if he does, I'd probably get a slap on the wrist because I haven't ever done it before. I would hope not. I would hope that he would legislate that as hard as anything else. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. If we're going to be talking about things, we need to talk about a big scope. I'm not sure that when Walgreens wanted to open, we asked them about their childproof capping, we asked them about where they keep the OxyContin, we asked them about how are you going to package this so that children won't be interested in, in smoking the cigarettes behind the counter or even eating batteries. I understand batteries can do as much damage to a child as probably anything on the shelves. So the last thing I'd like to say is this. I see that, I read through part of the packet and I saw that you want to put these in the industrial zones, and the only question I would ask is, how long does it take you to get from the police station over to the industrial zone during rush hour? And the reason I ask this question is, the one elephant in the room that you haven't mentioned is that these places are prone to robbery. The robber knows there's a lot of cash in these places, they know that that's where the dope is, and they're more likely to go in and rob, whereas I guess it's not as hard to get, you know, an adult to buy alcohol for you or something. But a lot of robberies do take place. I was just recently reading in Willamette Weekly and they said the number one problem that most of these sites have is people holding them up. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because if you're going to put it in an industrial zone, think about how long it will take you to get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Sean Garland.
My name is Sean Garland, 14711 Southwest Brook Court, in Sherwood here. Some of you may be aware that I am a member of the newly formed Police Advisory Board. We did spend quite a bit of our time, actually, most of our time so far, discussing medical marijuana and after several meetings, we did provide our proposal to the planning commission. The Police Advisory Board did decide to add additional regulations on top of what the state currently mandates. I was in the minority among that group because I don't really feel that Sherwood should really create any additional restrictions or barriers for medical marijuana patients to obtain their doctor prescribed prescriptions. While I do feel that the proposal created by my colleagues on the Police Advisory Board was very fair, simply do not believe that we need to further burden our friends and neighbors who are in need of help. I'd like to also just point out quickly that the issue tonight, as has been stated by Michelle, is strictly medical marijuana and not recreational marijuana. I was a bit puzzled and concerned by some comments made in the recent Archer where Council President Robinson mentioned that medical marijuana had been quote-unquote "legal" in marijuana for several years. I'd like to point out that it has been legal, no quotes, since 1998. I'm also a little puzzled why it was, we were reminded about the vote on recreational marijuana not passing in Sherwood, not being a majority in Sherwood. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight. So I'd like to make sure that everybody on the board is fully aware that we're talking about medical marijuana tonight and the concerns of these citizens regarding, recreational marijuana should not consider, be considered tonight when it's this. I would say that in my mind, medical marijuana patients are not your typical stoners. I'd like to hope that we're not looking at that stereotype. These are our neighbors, our friends who are being treated for illnesses, they're battling diseases, cancer, AIDS, other debilitating diseases. My personal story regarding this concern is my cousin Brian. In the early 1990s, he was diagnosed with AIDS. While he received excellent medical care and had many drugs prescribed to try and combat the disease, it simply didn't work. He declined rapidly towards the end of his life. He lost a great amount of weight, was losing his eyesight, he couldn't eat and he had virtually no energy. So he turned to marijuana. At that time, medical marijuana was obviously not legal in the United States, so he was forced to become a criminal, he was forced to break the law. But marijuana did improve the quality of his life over his final months. He was able to eat again, gained weight, he regained energy, his mental facilities returned. It was a positive experience for him. I would have a hard time looking him in the eye and telling him that the medicine that could improve his life was available, but that I was going to make it more difficult for him to get it. I would just hope, in closing here, that the members of the city council tonight would move past the outdated stereotypes of reefer madness and stoners and understand that these are our friends and neighbors in Sherwood. Let's not add any additional burden to these people by further restricting access to a better life. Thanks.
Thank you. Yvonne Gebhardt. And just a point of clarification, Yvonne. You have written on your form that you wanted to comment on tonight's topic and then it looks like perhaps somewhat of an unrelated topic, so I'd ask you to please limit your comments to the public hearing that we have tonight and perhaps the other matters next week, if you can.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So I wanted to thank the police and the Police Advisory Board and the Planning Committee and tonight's meeting because it was very informative, all of those are very informative, and I've learned a lot about marijuana, medical or recreational, either way. So I just would like to say that the people that I've, my neighbors too, that are actually involved with medical marijuana, as far as I know, they, they are not causing trouble or anything like that. So I, I don't know the extent of their usage or why they're doing it, if they are, but I, the people that I have known that have been that way, then they've, it's, it has helped them, I mean, they've done well. So the other thing is that I, I believe that government is meant to protect people, the people, and not to regulate, to strangle, but to help educate people more on this topic, particularly here in Sherwood. I think that that would be very helpful. So I, I respect your request, Council President, but I believe that our council, we're elected to represent the people of Sherwood and I would like to see us be a little more proactive at the legislative level with regard to what the citizens want with regard to the recreational side. So that's as far as I'll go because I think now is the time for the city to express their wishes to the legislature on the recreational side of marijuana.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Test, excuse me, Test Keys 22923, Southwest Pine Street, Sherwood. Mostly I have questions. Under A where it says divisions one, two, and three as it relates to the regulation of medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency, what does that declaring an emergency mean?
Where are you reading?
On my agenda.
On the front page of your agenda.
That means the night that we vote on it, it becomes effective that night. Most ordinances have a 30-day period before they become effective. And again, we're not voting tonight, this is just our first reading, but that's why we're declaring-
And I apologize for not having been to any of these meetings because probably a lot of my questions would have been answered. One of the things I understand about medical marijuana facilities is that they are, they are not allowed to make a profit, is that correct? Is that correct? So what would be the point in having a facility, just out of the goodness of your heart? You'd have to pay for your building to have it in and your place to grow it, so what's the point of having that if you're not making a profit? I don't get that.
No.
I suppose you only charge what it takes to cover the building and, you know, overhead. Other than that, no profit over that, so.
It's not.
So, I mean, that sounds silly, but so you would be able to charge enough to cover your expenses?
Salaries are not considered profit. So you could take $100,000 salary and still be a nonprofit. Look, there's plenty of them out there.
Okay, but my understanding, and I was talking to somebody else about this, they said you cannot make any profit off of this.
Salary is not considered profit. It's the price of doing business. So if I'm paying my employee, that's part of doing business, that's not profit.
After you cover all your expenses, if you have any money left over, that would be considered profit.
Right. Salary involves an expense.
Okay. And another thing is, from my understanding, and I know somebody that gets medical marijuana from a dispensary, they go in with a prescription, they get that prescription, and they leave. It's not, I don't understand where the "you can come and get so much a day" comes from. I didn't think that was possible, because I thought medical marijuana was a prescription.
Okay. Why don't you tell us what your questions are? I don't want to take up all of your four minutes.
No, no, no. That's basically what my questions are. And my other question is this, how come we can sell alcohol three doors away from mud puddles? That's the end.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. I will officially close the public hearing and ask if there are any other comments or discussion from council.
Well, I just want to quickly thank the Planning Commission and the Police Advisory Board, Chief Growth, for your comments and for the hard work that was done on this, putting together our own regulations for the city. I did get a chance to go to the Planning Commission meeting last week, and it was very good. Chair Simpson went through things line by line. I thought that the Planning Commission was very reasonable, so I very much appreciate that.
Counsel Harris, do you have any comments or discussion?
Well, yeah, I will say that I tend to agree with Mr. Garland. I believe this is a medication. It's been out there for 17 years, and we haven't seen any civilizations implode. It is a medical need for it. When I looked up some of the issues that medical marijuana treats, and has been known to treat hepatitis C, arthritis, insomnia, Lyme disease, anorexia, arthritis, Asperger's, autism, back sprains, bipolar disorder, cancer, adrenal cancer, prostate cancer, testicular cancer, uterine cancer, used to treat chemotherapy, chronic parainicystic fibrosis, Crohn's disease, diarrhea, eczema, epilepsy. If you're not familiar with Charlotte Figgy, you can easily Google her and see what cannabis has done for her life. She's a young child who is treated with medical marijuana on a daily basis, and it saved her life. She would not be alive today without it. Headaches, migraines, the list goes on. I mean, it's long. My personal experience is, I had a loved one who was dying of brain cancer and was ready to quit chemotherapy. They were throwing in the towel, they couldn't handle the chemotherapy anymore. It was making them sick, they couldn't eat. If anyone's been through cancer, you know that the treatment for cancer is often worse than the actual cancer itself on a day-to-day basis. Very, very conservative, was not interested in doing any kind of medical marijuana, but at some point decided to say, "I'm done, I'm not fighting anymore, I'd rather just be dead." And they said, "Well, then why not just try it?" Tried the medical marijuana and was able to continue chemotherapy for another year. It stopped all of the negative side effects that the chemotherapy was having. He was able to stop throwing up, he was able to sleep at night, he was able to eat, all of the things he hadn't been able to do prior to the cannabis. So I agree, I think that we have to separate recreational from the medical, and I think we cannot demonize these people. There are people out there who are going to get cards that they don't need, but doctors are regulated as well, and a doctor could lose their license for giving out medical marijuana cards to just any Joe on the street. So granted, there are going to be an exception to every rule. That's the way life is. I do believe that the majority of medical marijuana card users are using it because they have an actual illness and pain, and I agree with Chief Growth that they are not looking for attention. They don't want everyone to know they're going to buy their medical marijuana, because the stigma of using marijuana, even if you're dying, is negative. Nobody ever says, "Hey, good for you, you're not sick anymore." "You're doing what?" Is a very negative stigma that we have, and I think that we have to be careful about telling our citizens, because I guarantee there is a percentage of citizens who have medical marijuana cards in Sherwood, and I think we need to be careful about telling them, "Yeah, you can do it, but don't do it where we can see you," because I think it's shaming, and I don't think it's a good message even to send to our kids, that even this medicine that people are finding is reversing dementia, reversing it. But you don't take it, because we've grown up in a world that says marijuana is bad, so don't take it. I think that if you don't understand what medical marijuana is doing for people, you need to go out and find out, because it's really, really, really incredible, and it's never going to change if people don't let go of what they were told and find out for themselves. And I think we went through this with alcohol and prohibition, I wasn't alive back then, but I'm guessing it's the same thing. And I'll tell you, if somebody held a gun to my head and said, "Your child is going to either take marijuana or drink a bunch of alcohol," I would say, "Give him the marijuana" in a heartbeat. Alcohol is 10 times more destructive than marijuana to your body. So when we're talking about medical need for marijuana, I think that we need to be careful, again, about that. So I believe the state regulations are plenty. I also am not opposed to some of the other regulations, just because I understand that people are afraid of it, but now you know my stance.
Counsel Kuiper, do you have any other comments?
No, I don't disagree with you, Counsel Harris. I mean, my son grew up with Tourette's Syndrome, and I imagine that having some need for medical marijuana would probably have suppressed some of his tics, because they could be quite violent. And certainly, I think that there's a middle road. I don't think, for me personally, I have no preconceived ideas about the use of medical marijuana at all, but I do think that there's been a lot of really good work that's gone into what has been proposed. There's been a lot of thought, a lot of gray matter has gone into this to make it reasonable and to make it palable to everyone, so that people that do want medical marijuana can get medical marijuana. So, yeah, those are my comments. Thanks.
Counsel King.
Sure. I'd just like to say that this, like anything else, is an experiment, so whatever as a council we decide is not set in stone. And so going down the path, whatever issues come up, I'm sure either this council or another council will address whatever issues. And at this point, I'm happy with what the Planning Commission and the Police Board has done, and for all the input. You know, like I said, it's an experiment, and whatever adjustments we have to make, we'll make regarding this issue, so that's my two cents.
Thank you. Counsel Henderson.
Michelle, could you put up the, you had a chart that listed what other municipalities have done?
Sure.
No, it's not in the packet. Could you go back one, or whatever you had up there?
This is the first one, and then the hours or the other regulation.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So, and I guess go back one. So when we consider our ordinance, which were, again, this is only the first reading, when I look at what other municipalities have done, and I compare it to ours, it doesn't look like we're making it more difficult for this business or the people who benefit from medicinal marijuana than our neighbors. In fact, we're being more generous. If you look at what Tuolleton did. Tuolleton, in reality, pushes medicinal marijuana locations closer to us than any other municipality in the area. And so Sherwood's unique. I'd like to thank that the good work that the Planning Commission did, their deliberations, information they got from staff, the listening session, parks, or the Police Advisory Board. I think if we were off balance and we were demonizing this, that that would have been really blatantly obvious from the feedback we got, and I don't think that that's the And I don't disagree with a number of comments that this is, this is not, you know, an evil monster that has just recently risen its head, but because, as the chief put in his letter, a lot of time and effort has gone into, a lot of people and a lot of resources have gone into combating youth substance abuse in Sherwood. We are, I think, you know, conservative in heading down a road where we have not had this type of experience. And as multiple counselors said, an ordinance, this is not like the Ten Commandments. We can change it, we can modify it, we can amend it, we can add other zones if we find that people who operate these businesses complement the community, they're good partners. I think, as the chief had mentioned, most of them don't want attention, they don't want negative attention, they just want, some of them are drawn to this as a calling, and they feel like they should be a part of this, or they may have been touched by somebody who was affected by this. I have a friend currently right now who has two forms of cancer, and she wouldn't be able to eat if she didn't have a medicinal marijuana card. But I do worry about access to youth whenever you're welcoming this type of business into your community. So I appreciate the work the staff has done, the Planning Commission, the Police Advisory Board, all the people who came tonight, to remind us that we have our own views, but we represent 18,000 people. But there are more people in Sherwood who are not impacted by marijuana than people who are impacted by marijuana, and those are people that want us to be sure that we're looking out for everybody and not just one small group of people. And when I look at this comparison, I think, can you go to hours, please?
Sure.
Just. Is it, since I don't go to the alcohol, I don't go to the liquor store, is the liquor store open on Sundays?
No.
No. And that's by the choice of the individual operators.
Oh, okay. So I wish we had more people from the community here tonight, but one of the reasons we proposed amending the charter was so that people who may have had something else going on tonight couldn't make it would have an opportunity to come. So there's, if you know somebody who is interested in this issue and like to give feedback, they can email, and they can come in person again when we do the second reading, so. And thank you, Chris, for whatever you've done to help us get this to the table.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle, thank you. And the chief.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Is that all?
Yep.
Okay. I have some discussion points. One of them being, when I attended the Planning Commission at the adoption of the recommendation to forward this to us, I thought that the Police Advisory Committee had recommended reducing the size of the particular facility from 2,500 to 3,000, I think.
Yeah, they did.
And was, I didn't really hear a reason behind the finding.
So the initial recommendation that was presented to the Planning Commission was 5,000 square feet minimum size, and that's in ke-
Maximum size?
Yeah, maximum size, excuse me, sorry. And so, sorry. So that was proposed in keeping with our industrial zone, that's the maximum for retail-esque type businesses. So I kept that language and brought that before the Police Advisory Board, and they recommended 2,500 square feet minimum, maximum, sorry. And then at the Planning Commission hearing, the discussion was to allow a maximum size of 3,000 square feet. Just, I think that little difference was, yeah, that difference was just enough to kind of-
At the meeting, I went to that meeting, and they mentioned it was, seemed to be the average size around the community, and so they just, I think they just pulled it from another, pulled it from another city's regulation and said, "Yeah, that sounds good."
Right, Washington County proposed 3,000 square feet.
How much in Washington County?
3,000, maximum size. I gotta write that down.
Okay. My other point is, the chief had mentioned the importance of incorporating by reference the OARs on this, and I didn't see that in our code anywhere. And so I was wondering if that's somewhere else?
So the regulations are for the ORSs, which are the actual statute, medical marijuana dispensary, and compliance with the Health Authority under ORS, which is, are the statute, and the regulations are the OARs. And those are enabled under ORS by statute. So OARs are the rules that the ORS allows to happen, so.
Okay. So maybe I should ask Chris. Would it be appropriate, under, page 69 of our packet, is talking about amendments to the code, where we're creating a new category, 16.38.020, medical marijuana dispensary, would it be appropriate there to say that these regulations incorporate the Oregon Health Authority OARs and other rules?
Isn't that number two? Or is 475-3-
Exactly. Yeah, on page 69, 16.38.020A2, but specific to what Michelle was just saying, it's important to note that with respect to the ORS, the state statutes, medical marijuana facility must have a current valid registration with the Oregon Health Authority under the statutory requirements. But with respect to local enforcement, it's the next sentence that matters, "Failure to comply with Oregon Health Authority regulations," not the ORS, the OARs.
Okay.
Failure to comply with the OARs is a violation of this code.
Okay.
And could be enforced in the manner that the code provides for enforcement of zoning regulations generally.
Okay, so that brings up a question to me. I didn't understand if it was, well, I didn't know if it was correct, on section two that you're talking about, we first cite to rules, Oregon Health Authority rules, and then, what you just read, is Oregon Health Authority regulations. Should that both, is that correct, to reference them as different, or should they both be rules?
I'm sorry, where do you see rules? Oh, I see. That, I'm sorry, so, two things. One is, that's a statement of the subject of that provision, more than an operative provision itself. But secondly, no, there's no meaningful distinction between rules and regulations. They're the same thing.
All right.
So the statute regulates medicinal marijuana, is the rules are administrative orders under the statute?
That's correct. They're implementing rules adopted by the agency to implement the statute.
Do they call the rules or call them?
Right.
So they're just a subsection of the ORS?
Right. They tend to be more specific, yeah.
And does any of council want to limit or reduce the hours of operation, with my own personal preference being coinciding with the liquor store being closed on Sundays?
Although that's not an ordinance, right? It's just a personal choice for that owner?
That's correct.
That's right. State law allows liquor stores to be open on Sunday. Some franchisees choose not to.
I think the one on Barber is open.
It's, they need to be open at least eight hours, and they have the option of being open on Sundays.
I see.
Right. So no one's concerned about keeping it open till 8:00, including- So, no one's concerned about keeping it open until 8:00 and including Sundays?
I was gonna say, the only hours they regulate are, is it from 7:00 AM to 11:00 o'clock at night for the OLCC?
You want to know the Sherwood Oregon, Sherwood liquor store?
Yeah.
The OLCC says that they need to be open eight hours, at least eight hours every day, with the option of holidays and Sundays, they don't need to be open. So, you have to have an eight hour, at least an eight-hour time that they're open. So, they modify those depending on location. They could be open longer than that.
Can you pull up the screen that shows the hours of those around us? And for the chief's reference, would you like to see the time any different than 8:00 PM?
No, I, I, whoa, sorry. I support, I wasn't trying to answer with emphasis. I support the 10:00 to 8:00 P. seven days a week.
Okay.
Again, that's in keeping with my position that this needs to be made available to folks, and I can't, I, to be fair, I can't state any legitimate reason why they, they couldn't be open seven days a week. I don't-
My only point, my only concern, you have adequate staff to cover a Sunday problem if there are one, if one exists, in the same respect that you would Saturday or, or Monday through Friday.
Well, that's a, that's a whole different topic. I realize that I'm, that I'm putting this department in a position to, to have added responsibility that, that we really don't have the staffing for, but quite frankly, we don't have a choice. I mean, that's, I, that's a different conversation down the road. Right now, we need to address what we're doing, and, and I don't see us needing to respond in the, in the truest sense of the word, you know, lights and sirens, we've got something going on at dispensary. To me, the bigger issue is just helping to make sure that they're staying within the regulations and doing what they're supposed to be, because I am, quite frankly, not confident that the state is going to be able to provide that-
Right.
-with, with the way they've chosen to do it. And as I said, the community's going to look to us to make sure that, that honest people are honest. That's, that's what we do. So, that's, that's more of what our time is going to go to than responding to in-progress issues. I, I don't anticipate that.
Okay. I personally do not like the fact that included in these regulations are security bars on doors and windows. I think it make, makes it look like trashy and not very well-controlled. Is there a reason that-
It's, it's not required. If there were security, if the property owned, or the proprietor wanted to have security bars, it just indicates that they need to be shown on the inside, not that they are required.
Yeah.
My question is, what about smoked windows or darkened windows? Is that a state requirement for these medical marijuana dispensaries? Or, do you know?
I'm not sure. I could get back to you on whether any requirements for the glazing is different.
Okay. My next comment is that I, I recommend that we add the, to the public park or plaza last very item on the code amendment, I, I recommend that we say, "Owned by city or other government agency," just to make it clear. I know we added that definition at the last Planning Commission meeting.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
So, I know some parks are owned by, like, homeowners associations, so would that make them not fit into there?
My understanding is that we're not. Michelle, is that wrong?
So-
They're not owned, they're maybe maintained.
The definition of a public park or other recreational facility which is under the control, operation, or management of the city or other governmental agency. So, if the homeowners association, for example, we recently, there's going to be open space at the Cedar Brook PUD, and that's, that's going to be owned and maintained by them with a public access way. That wouldn't be part of a buffer zone, for example.
Residential.
It's in the residential zone, and it wouldn't be impacted by that. But if there were an industrial park that wasn't open to the public, that, that might fall under that provision. I can't think of anything currently that-
Sorry. Before we get too far away, I just wanted to follow up on a couple items. The Sherwood Liquor Store, if the posting on the website is correct, which I assume it is, the hours are 10:30 to 7:30 Monday through Thursday, 10:30 to 8:00 Friday, Saturday, close Sunday. Those are the hours of the one liquor store franchise, OLCC franchise in Sherwood. And to Captain Hamlin and my knowledge, there's no requirement in the state statute for gray windows or anything like that. The requirement is that the product cannot be in view, public view through the window. So, it would depend on the, the owner, operator, the dispensary, as to where they wanted to put their product and what they would need to do then in relation to that, and what their, you know, I suppose, the physical layout of, of their, their dispensary and so on.
It's worth noting on that subject that the OARs have, you know, fairly detailed regulations for security at, at a dispensary about how the product has to be stored and how the doors have to be locked, what kinds of locks you have to have on the door, alarm systems, video surveillance, and camera coverage, so that there are fairly extensive state regulations for security, but nothing with respect to smoked windows or bars.
And I would also add, it's, it's important to understand as well that this is valuable commodity, right? Even though we're not talking about it in, in terms of a for-profit retail operation, if it goes missing, it's extremely valuable, especially when you start talking about oils that have been extracted and have gone through an extraction product, process. You, you can get into the hundreds and thousands of dollars' worth of product very quickly. And so, these folks are motivated to make sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, it, it, that's a, that's a very worthwhile investment for them, so.
The one, one concern I also have is, and I mentioned it to Joe this evening, because there's several ways that the OHA can quickly shut down an operation, my concern is what happens to the location afterwards, if there's any use restrictions, time, place, or manner we can put on if a license gets pulled. Can we have a requirement that they notify the city that their license has been pulled? Or can we mandate that they continue their operations of the security features while they're down? You know, if it's a temporary. I don't know if we can do any of that.
So, with a type-two staff-level decision, those are things that could be written into the conditions of approval. Any notification of any violation that we subsequently would have to be notified as well, and that would obviously be a violation of the-
Right.
-provisions. So, we could add conditions in the notice of decision that would be issued relevant to that.
Okay. We don't need to have it in here, though.
Right.
Okay. And then, there is a fully operational security alarm system required by the state, and do we have permits for those?
City no longer does that.
No, okay. And then, my last comment is, there's a provision in here that allows for consumption of marijuana on-site, and that, to me, is a big problem, but I guess it allows for an employee who has a medical marijuana card to be allowed to consume-
On the premises, out of sight from, from the public.
Has, has anyone attempted to say they can't do that in our local jurisdictions?
I'm aware of the provision, but I haven't heard of any other jurisdictions regulating that. I can look into that for the net, specifically for the next meeting.
I was trying to find it.
Clarification point, it is ill, you can't smoke marijuana in public.
Correct. So, yeah, that, that was actually, came up earlier. The medical marijuana program does not allow public consumption-
So, like, I couldn't walk in with my card, grab a bunch of weed and start taking it?
No, you couldn't. Now, that, that allowance is specific to employees, and I think the rationale behind that is, if an employee's there for an eight, you know, 10-hour shift, they may very well have a need to, to have some medicine if they're a cardholder. And so, I think the, if I'm going to assume some intent, that's why they allow an employee only to consume on-premise but out of sight of, of customers or others. But, but, but a cardholder that comes in cannot buy a product and then go sit in a room and, and smoke it or consume it or, or otherwise utilize it.
Can't test out the product.
No, no. That's, that's a no-no.
And does it say it's specific to employees?
Yes.
Yeah, it just, it just says, "An employee." Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Do I have a motion to carry this ordinance that we are considering this evening as our first reading to the May 5th meeting next week?
I move that the city council, oh, you got it. What am I doing? We're not approving the ordinance.
We're continuing the hearing.
Can you describe? I have it, but it says, "Approve ordinance."
You are approving the ordinance?
Oh, I am.
Under the charter, you have to approve at two readings.
Okay. Okay. Then, I move that the city council approve ordinance 2015005 and place it on the next available city council meeting agenda for additional public comment and consideration.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those in against the motion, say nay. Having concluded the statement, or the vote, the city council has approved carrying ordinance number 2015005 to a second reading scheduled for May 5th, 2015 council meeting, where additional public testimony will be accepted, and the council will make its final decision on the ordinance. If anyone has no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Counsel President, can I do a little plug, because we did touch upon recreational marijuana? Tomorrow evening at the police station, our state reps, both Representative Davis and Senator Thatcher, are holding a town hall to update the community on what the state's process is to deal with recreational marijuana, and I think if you have issues or concerns or opinions they want to hear from our citizens, I know a number of the counselors are going to be in attendance tomorrow night. That's at 6:30 at the police station tomorrow evening, so.
Very well. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. We are adjourned.